This conference will now be recorded.
Excellent. So we have MJ, Bert, Larry, Catherine on the phone, and myself.
And you have Joan.
We have Joan. Oh, and we have Joan. So we've got a forum. We're all good to go.
Absolutely.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep.
I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Okay. So first order of business is to review and approve the May 10th meeting minutes. I think I was for this.
You were absent, Nick, and we do have a correction to be made. And MJ?
Yeah, I talked to Sheri earlier. We need to amend the May minutes, so I make a motion to amend the minutes to include Catherine Zemeckis' absence. And then I would vote to approve the amended minutes.
Okay, so the motion is move to approve the minutes of the May 10th meeting with the following correction. Add Catherine Zemeckis was absent. And you need a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Bert? Okay. You need discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, that carries.
You should have someone abstentions.
Oh, sorry. Any abstentions? No, I think we're good.
Well, you, Nick, and Catherine were not here, so you would have to abstain.
I did abstain. Yes, so Catherine and I abstained.
Okay, and Brett Martin has joined our meeting. Brett Martin, I believe it is.
Brett is one of the co-chairs of Sustainability.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I see Robert Connell, but I don't believe that's actually Robert Connell.
No, it's under my husband's name. I haven't really changed it. It's Sue.
Hey, hey Sue, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Okay, so we've got a couple of visitors from Sustainability, which is great. We're gonna just sort of listen in, figure out what we're up to, and see if it helps. They're in the process of redoing the Sustainability CT certification. Actually, if you want to give us two minutes on that, either Sue or Brett, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can start it out, and Sue, if you want to just jump in, and Abby as well. Abby, Sue and I are actually both pretty new to the Sustainability Committee. We joined just this past spring. So we are, last year, the Sustainability Committee applied for and unfortunately didn't reach certification points for the Sustainable CT Program, which is basically a program through a 501(c)(3) organization called Sustainable CT, which rewards towns or awards towns for sustainable practices across a whole bunch of different areas, including responsible use of natural resources, fostering an artistic community, a bunch of different areas. So we joined, you know, this spring, as I mentioned, and we are kind of coming on new co-chairs, and we are reapplying for certification this time around, and the application is actually in progress. So we're trying to just kind of piece together various different things that we missed the last time, so that we can actually get the town certified as a Sustainable CT town. And so we know you all have done a lot of really great work here on the Conservation Committee, so we're trying to, I guess, kind of just listen in, and we have a few specific areas that we're gonna want to find out about. And I know Sue has done a real effective deep dive into it, but so that's why we're here, and so we can ask you our questions. I guess that's the time.
And I think just to tag on to that, we really want to make connections to you around the Pollinator Pathway, the dark skies, the invasive species. I mean, those are credits that we can get from just the fantastic work you guys are doing, along with open space and a few other things. So I don't want to take up the meeting to do that, but I would love to be able to connect with somebody who could be our point person to really answer specific questions regarding the certification documents and information that we need.
Okay, well, Sue and Brett, I still owe you all the stuff I gave to Eric last year, so I will get that to you. And Catherine, I thought you also worked with Eric on that, did you not?
Yeah, I mean, I sent him everything that we had. Maps and the, I don't remember now, I have to look back in my, but sent him everything I had.
Yeah, so some of the things that we're looking for is like, I know other people have joined the Pollinator Pathway from the community, and so we need to be able to document all those wonderful people that have, you know, done that work, and, you know, specifically those kinds of level. And it's also an ongoing thing, because I know that it's changing every day with the work you're doing. So it's an ongoing, ongoing process that we would love to, you know, coordinate and collaborate with you guys.
All right, great. Hey, I don't know why my camera is not working. I'm frantically trying to fix it, but I cannot get it going, so you'll just have to do without my smiling face.
Voices are cutting in and out an awful lot on my side here. I'm having a real hard time. So you guys are from the Clinton Sustainability?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so there, okay, do you still have the application that was filled out last year? Some of the we provided for that?
Yes.
Because I'm trying to remember what else, because it's gonna be, yeah, Pollinator Pathway, I think, was included in that. Trying to think of what else you would need from us.
I did a bunch of stuff on it, Catherine, so I gotta just find that and send it to these guys. My apologies for not doing it already. That's uncool. Oh, hold on.
Yeah, I think, you know, you all have really tackled the whole, I think Brett's of ambitious tasks, so we are just kind of, I guess, hoping to, maybe the best form is to just, you know, find out which of you we'd be able to speak to outside of a setting like this, maybe just meet privately, just to kind of see the updates, because I know that there have been updates, you know, since we submitted the application last year. And part of the difficulty is in trekking through the breadth of documentation, even like meeting minutes and, you know, that kind of thing. So I think just having a point person would be, would be great.
I'm happy to be a point person. I don't know, you know, Larry or MJ or Bert, you guys have been around forever too. You're, and Catherine. Catherine was on both our commission as well as the Sustainability Committee. She may be your person. Not to volunteer.
Excuse me, I'm caller number two. Would you care to identify yourself?
Caller number two, you're on mute. Nope, we're gone.
They're gone, okay.
All right, so Nick, if you don't mind, then we'll just reach out to you after the meeting, and then we can start. I can give you the specifics, and maybe you can just point us to the resources. Okay.
Okay, absolutely. You bet.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're into our various workshops. The first one is the Pollinator Pathway Project. As some of you know, Abby and Catherine, MJ, I don't know if you were there at all.
No, I didn't have any advanced notice of it. I would certainly have been there.
Well, I couldn't make it, but I've been helping on the outside, and I was there before it got started and tried to get going. But the Indian River Bank is now planted with a Pollinator Pathway garden. It looks awesome. So we didn't get everything we wanted. We did not get it into a rain garden as well, so there is no filtering of the pollution that comes down from the the parking lot, but it is a gorgeous garden that was done completely by donations. So there was no town money outside of the very nice mulch that got delivered the day before. But if you have not seen it, please go down and take a look. Also, if anybody is interested in joining the watering brigade, just like last year with the first half of the riverbank, we're gonna have to water this as well.
I'm happy to do that, Nick, but I don't know how you get the water there. I talked to Carrie Allen about it, because I put as much, I brought three five-gallon buckets and as much as, much as I could fill them safely without them sloshing over, because I tops for them. And that wasn't nearly enough.
No, so I did it this morning, MJ. And I brought down 10 gallons, and I needed another five.
Yeah, so.
So 15 gallons. So, good news.
Yeah.
If you walk in front, so from the riverbank, you go in front of Clinton Liquors and Clinton Pizza over to the side of Shore Appliance.
Okay.
There is a spigot there where you can fill up.
So you could refill the buckets. Got it. Okay, and and they're okay with us using their water? Okay.
Well, I mean, they're not there at that time in the morning, so it's fine.
Okay. So then.
No, Bruce, Bruce Lighty confirmed with them that they're fine with it.
Okay, so then I would be happy to join the watering brigade, just let me know. What day?
It's on the side of the building of Shore Appliance.
Okay.
Okay.
To get there, you have to walk in front of like Clinton Liquors and Clinton Pizza. And that's off, you know, very close to the street.
Okay.
Okay. Do you guys have any pictures of that plantings that we can use for the application?
Indeed, I do.
Awesome.
I sent them to you.
Video, too.
What's that?
I think I've got some of those pictures, too, so I can forward to.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
Anyway, that was, I mean, Catherine, I gotta say, that was the very first project I heard when I joined the Conservation Commission. You know, setting up a pocket park, something along that riverbank.
Yes.
Very first project. So it's wonderful that we finally pulled it off.
Yes.
And it looks great. I would love to get a bench that we could put there, although I'm a little nervous about it.
But wait a minute, why did they suddenly decide to put the dumpsters over there?
You know, I think they moved them there when they fixed up the back of the parking lot.
There was a bit of a rodent issue happening with some of the vegetation in the back before the rock went down, and so that was to try to keep them away, so a little bit of a management tool.
Yeah, I think we probably should move them back to the back of the parking lot again. That would be nice.
Well, maybe, I'm there, though. Maybe that's not, I mean, wherever they are, though, we have to keep them neat and enclose them with something or something, because they just are like out in the open like that.
Yeah. Anyway, okay. So.
But you can't put a park, dumpsters there, is what I'm saying, because that's where the park, that's where the, that's where the bench was gonna go. But they put the dumpsters there.
The bench is gonna go underneath the tree there.
Yeah, behind the dumpsters.
Behind the dumpsters, yes. So I will talk to, Abby, I'll reach out to you, see who we can talk to about moving the dumpsters back where they were.
Yeah, we can chat with Todd. I've talked to him a couple of times about it, and really, it's been, it was moved, it was moved for a purpose. And so the question is, is there any more rodent concern on the railroad bank at this point, since the vegetation's been cleared? And so that, that's one thing. The other thing, just so folks are aware, there's no funding for it, and there's no sort of project yet, but I keep putting sort of bugs in people's ear about the potential to look at this parking lot, at least from the town one portion of things, with our town engineer, to come up with an estimate of what it would cost to do some of the stormwater treatment pieces, to expand some of that green area. I think there's actually a lot of extra space in that parking lot and paved space that could be converted to rain gardens and other pieces. And so, and the way the catch basins layout could lend itself to a really nice project, whether it's under 319, MS4, there's certainly venues, so I will be slowly chipping away at sort of trying to get some support for that, but I just wanted to lay out, I think this is a, you know, it's awesome that it has gone this far, and I am hoping that we can kind of pick up the torch and keep things moving over time there.
Yeah, so the next thing, the next project we're doing, what?
I thought there were plans to somehow remediate the erosion.
There, there were old, I believe there was old design done to do something similar to what happened on the fire department side of the riverbank with the riprap and those pieces. Their funding wasn't in place. It's not in place now. There's no permitting for it. So that would be, so that would be part of a totally additional project. It was an incre, I think it was cost prohibitive to continue it. So there's, there's the erosion piece, and there's the quality of the water reaching the bank, so.
And just an aside for a thought, because part of what sustainability is, is also engaging youth in the, in, you know, in town. I'm just thinking, is there an Eagle Scout or somebody that might be interested in partaking in, like, you know, putting a bench there or something like that? So just throwing that idea out there.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, one of the, so the next project that we're doing is, there's a little island there where we planted just a tiny bit, right behind where Fringe is. The remainder of that island is full of mugwort and just hideously ugly bush. So when Todd gets, he's on vacation this week. When he gets back from vacation, hopefully, we can get him to pull that bush. We're gonna weed out the mugwort. We're gonna put down some sort of barrier to try and keep it to a minimum, and then build up soil and compost. And then we're gonna plant that whole island as well. And that may not be as much pollinator. That may be annuals for the first year and mix a few pollinators in, so that it looks really super nice.
I'm sorry, what is the location of the island?
So it's in that same parking lot. There's a little island behind Fringe.
Little, small, okay, got it, okay.
And we planted that, the Beautification Committee planted a third of that last year.
Okay.
And that's still there, and it's going fine, but the remainder of the garden just really needs to be overhauled.
And how about the ones at the, at Post Office Square?
Haven't touched that.
Are they doing okay? Because I was going over there to do watering last year.
For whom?
Well, I, Carrie told me which areas to do. I was taking Carrie's Wednesdays, and she told me that there were some, like at the foot of Post Office Square there. And so you don't know anything about those?
I don't. Okay.
So while we're on Pollinator Pathways, do you know about how many people have, like, signed up to have pollinator gardens, or like how many existing pollinator gardens there are?
So when I first did my canvas, I came up with about 20 pollinator gardens. And then after all the presentations that we did, so we did, we did the one in Town Hall, we did the, we did one in the library, one in Town Hall, and one at the church. We discovered another 20 or so, so we think we're up around 45. Now, not all of them have registered with the National, but we're getting, you know, I kind of think we need another 50 or so to get to Critical Mass and Clinton.
Sure, sure.
How do you get them, register them? I know that, I have, actually should have to take some pictures of my yard, too, because I want to register my, mine last year, and I had to take, you know, you have to send pictures of it and everything. And is everybody that you have listed on our Pollinator Pathway, do they know, I mean, do you have to have it registered and pictures in order to be on?
So I think I understood, Catherine, but you're breaking up for some reason. Yes, you don't need pictures. It's a self-attestation to join the National Pollinator Pathway and register your garden.
Okay.
Okay.
But for Sustainability, we do need to have some of those photographs. The other question is, do you guys provide any seeds or anything like that to support people doing that?
Oh, yes, we do. So when we did our three sessions last year, the final two, we provided seeds. And we provided, I mean, just unbelievable numbers of seeds for the pathway.
Awesome. Abby, I'll be tapping into you for that, Nick.
Okay, cool. One of the things we're gonna do, hopefully, again, is we're going to, you know, I don't want to take up all the time on Pollinator Pathway, but I, Abby had suggested that maybe I reach out, or I had suggested to reach out to Christina for labor with the Senior Town Committee, and offer her a a session where we take them for the Food for All Pollinator Pathway Garden, and then we show them along the Indian River Bank as sort of two projects that we've completed. So we are gonna try and put that together. I gotta talk to Christine, figure out a date, and then so that'll be another Pollinator Pathway presentation that goes on. I tried to get a little press for this. I did write to the Shoreline News, and I wrote to Carl about what happened on the Indian River Bank, so hopefully we'll get a little good press on, on that as well. Dark Skies Project. I don't have anything that's gone on. Has anybody else? Oh, hey, did you, Sheri, did you notice that Mark Giaccone is here?
Yes, he just noted, just came on about a minute ago.
Yes.
Hey, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt you, so I just snuck in.
No slinking in, Mark. Okay, so got no additional information, so I think we just skip over that. It is probably worth us picking that up at another session, and we, we got the zoning changes on commercial, new commercial. But, you know, would love to extend that to residential and some other stuff, so still more work to be done there. Residential food composting. MJ, I think you, you took on the mantle of that, which is exciting.
Yeah, Joan and I did a little work on it, but I was really hoping for some input from other people, and I know Catherine checked in and, and wants to add something about why, and that's a great idea, why we're doing, you know, why it's so important to compost, you know, two big reasons. Keeping it out of the waste stream, keeping it out of the landfill, and improving the quality of the soil, enriching soil. But I think for now, because this thing is happening pretty soon.
Yeah, we just constructioned out.
I just want something out there so that people know, and there's been no interest from any Morgan students about, you know, being part of any filming or anything, even though the teacher herself was pretty enthusiastic about it. So Abby, have you gotten from Todd the final list of?
Yes, I have, I have the list for the permit language, and I will email you tomorrow, and then I also got his sort of overall blessing. He liked the language that you shared. He's, he's ready to go, so as soon as this group is, is ready, it'll go up on the Conservation page, the DPW page, everything will kind of point to the same direction. And then we can come up with like a buzz line for a town announcement that we can have ahead of July 1st. Mary put up on the main website, so there's like a newsflash kind of announcement that goes out.
So do I call it food scraps, food scrap recycling program, or do I call it composting program?
I would call it residential food composting, because it's going, it's going into the leaf and mulch compost area, so I would, yeah, I'd keep it as is.
Okay, and what is the plan? Like, when they, once they combine them, the food scraps with the leaves, with that sort of thing. Will there be an opportunity for, for people who drop things off to actually get some compost, or how is that gonna work?
So it's, it's getting mixed into the current compost materials, the leaf stuff that's already on site, so however that compost pickup is happening now, it'll stay the same. It'll just be, when it, when it kind of carries over, this decomposed material will also be in that mix.
Yeah, it'll be richer. So if you've ever been to the dump factor, you can pick up free compost at any time.
But, you know, isn't it a little, Catherine maybe can answer this question. Isn't it, doesn't it take a little, like, a little cooking first before it's ready to be used on your plants?
Oh, yeah, they cook it. They cook it.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what they're doing, before they put it into the big pile. They put the finished compost in the big pile for people to come themselves to.
So it probably cooks a year before it gets put into the compost piles.
Yeah, they've got, they've got, they have a certain mix proportion that the state requires that they do at certain ratios, certain turn schedules, temperatures, all that kind of stuff, and so that's all included in the permit. And so Todd will have his crew maintaining and monitoring that, so by the time it goes through and it's available for resident, for residential use, it's ready to go.
It looks just like dirt, MJ. You can't, it doesn't look like it.
Perfect, that's great. And so then, if somebody wants, after they drop off their food scraps, if they want to, they can go access the compost.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, where in the dump are they taking the food scraps?
So my understanding is wherever they're, they're gonna cordon off an area where folks do sort of the general leaf drop off, that kind of stuff. And then, so I actually, and forgive me, because I'm new enough not to have been yet, so, um, I know, I need to get up there. And so the, so what's gonna happen is there'll be two sort of roll-off containers that, you know, as soon as one gets filled, the next one gets brought in, and he'll have his crew who's accepting other materials be able to kind of divert that off in a separate dumping spot, so it goes right into a container and then right into the compost piles.
Right.
Now, I thought originally.
Do we know when this is starting?
July 1.
Really? Okay, because I talked to the guy at the dump, and he didn't know.
Oh, last I talked to Todd, it was July 1. That's why we were pushing for the language, yeah.
That's what you told me, Abby, yeah, that you would be setting it up the week of the 26, and then for Saturday, July 1. And then for Saturday, July 1st, opening. Um, and I wanted to talk about that too, because it would be great if we had some commission volunteers helping, you know, there at, at the town dump saying, oh, here's where you go for composting. And maybe checking on what people are gonna be, you know, donating or what, what people are going to be dropping off. Making sure that it fits because, you know, can't have any plastic, obviously no inorganic, um, material. So I myself would be happy to be there.
Yeah, I, I could go on a Saturday, I think. I could not go on a Friday.
Right. And since it starts on a Saturday anyway, Saturday, July 1st.
It'd be kind of cool to do something even like a little like sort of thank you certificate to the first person who shows up. Like, you know, you were the very first bucket.
Oh, and, and.
You know, the dump opens at 7:15.
You gotta take up, you have to.
We'll give it to the guys.
Can, can I, um, call or has Carl or Todd maybe already contacted Eric O'Connell from the Harbor News?
I don't think anybody has done any press reach out on this yet. I think they're really relying on this group to be the, the voice of the project.
Okay.
I'll put it up, uh, I'll put up your, so MJ, when you finish that flyer, I'll put it up on Nextdoor News. And we can have Catherine put it up on, uh, All Things Clinton.
Right.
Positively Clinton.
Positively Clinton.
Now, um, I, I have no idea how to add any of Joan's images to my text. And I have no idea how to put it on the conservation page.
Okay. So send me your most recent version.
Okay, when, when.
And then so Joan, if you send me your images, I can put them together.
Okay, you can. Okay.
I've got mad skills.
Awesome. Awesome. I really like that image that talks about soil.
Yeah.
Especially after my conversation with Catherine. And, you know, there's a couple of great, so I guess no more than three, right, Abby? Three images to go with the text?
Yeah, I think, you know, and, and over time, I think you can build the page out or you can, you know, sort of can keep it going. But just to start, you want to get that quick snapshot, make it really easy for people to connect to and, and just do.
Awesome. Okay. So I will contact Eric O'Connell and I'll wait for your email. And then I will send the email, I'll send the completed text to you, Nick. And then what should I do? Should I just send an email to the group seeing who, who's willing to volunteer on Saturday, July 1st?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
And, you know, the dumps open from like 7:15, some, I've forgotten whether it's 7:15, 7:45 to 3:10. And so, you know, we should have somebody there for.
That's true shifts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question. Many of these places use compostable bags that can break down in a compost pile.
Yeah, we're not doing that, right, Abby?
Correct. We're not giving any out. And my understanding from Todd is that bags will not be accepted into the material per our permit.
But I wonder if exceptions could be made for compostable bags.
Potentially. The issue is going to be the verifying on the part of the guys taking stuff in. That's kind of hard to do if we haven't given them to folks and that, yeah.
Okay.
So I think we do need to consider that somehow, Abby, because I think otherwise it's really hard to.
Convince.
Yeah. It's what they do in a couple of the other communities. They have these light blue bags. I, I don't know who makes them. But, you know, they, they, uh, it, it's like $2 for a roll of 20. And, you know, the dump can sell them. And then if they see them and they know those are the ones that break down, they're in good shape. But I agree with you. No other plastic bags, just those light blue compost. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll pursue that and see if I can come up with what it is.
Yeah, but I, I get Abby's, um, what Abby is saying is if it's in a bag, they can't tell that you're being compliant.
Right. So unless it's that blue bag, it doesn't work.
Well, even the blue bag, they can't see what's inside it.
Oh, I see.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right. You don't want, you don't want them opening up bags.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. So, um,
And a lot of times, they'll throw a lot. They'll throw it. That's the problem. In the bin that doesn't look.
I couldn't understand that.
So, you know, I, those same five gallon buckets that I use to bring water for the pollinator garden is what I would probably use to collect, you know, each week to collect my food scraps. Obviously we would have to have some sort of top on it up because it, um, it would not smell so good.
Oh, it's, it's awful. What, so, and I.
I think it's going to take a little while for people to get the hang of it and get their own containers.
I agree. But we want, we, those are the two biggest things is what can go in there? And they have to bring it in a container. They can't bring it in a bag. So.
Now, wait a minute. I heard two different things though. Is this taking meat and bones?
Yes.
Yes. And same with shellfish, right? Fish and shellfish scraps, including bones.
Okay, good.
Yes, yes. Um.
Very interesting.
I myself, I'm probably going to be there every Saturday.
Yeah, I'm gonna too. I mean, I ha, I do a little composting my yard, but not that kind of composting.
Exactly.
That's a big deal. Yeah, yeah. So.
Like I can't cut up my watermelon rinds small enough to work in my own little.
Right.
So it would never turn into usable soil. So this is.
Right.
I'm excited myself, but, you know, some people I've spoken to are disappointed that we, it's not a collection, that they have to actually go to the dump, to the transportation. So.
Well, you know, so that's the next step is talk to Schweitzer.
Well, we would certainly have to invite all collectors. We could.
Oh, yeah. But I, at least in my area, Schweitzer has like 90% market share.
Yeah.
And I thought that's what Carl didn't want.
A private business. This is a municipal program. So, um, so.
Yeah, there, there would be permitting ramifications for that. We'd have to really sort of talk about what that looks like going forward. I think that the hope was, is, or is there a committed group of folks who's interested and likely to participate? And let's see how this goes. And then if, as it, you know, as some time goes by, let's see, let's see where it can grow.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, but I, I think it's going to be really hard to get it off the ground if we don't have, we don't make it. And right now we're not making it easy. What Stanford does is they have a little hose next to the thing so that when you dump your compost, you can spray your bin out, which is nice. I doubt.
I don't think they have, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they have meat and fish. Like I don't think you can do meat and bones and things in Stanford. I think.
No, you can't. They have a completely different system.
Okay.
Anyway, I think, uh, you know, I do think that we probably need to talk to Todd about whether we can get this, the compostable bags, because I understand his reservations, but once people are sort of certified, you know, that might be a, a way to make things a little easier.
What's a, what's a compostable bag? What, what, is it paper?
It dissolves in the store.
Yeah, it dissolves.
It's what?
Well, it looks plastic, Catherine, but it dissolves super fast.
Yeah, the deep.
What is it like?
The Deep River folks have, have that. They have the compostable bags. And if you, I think if you click on, uh, click on that, it even tells you who makes the bags.
Okay.
But in Deep River, it was sustainability that, um, that did the composting program. They have a great website. It's really nice, but we'll get there.
We're not making, we're not taxing these versions in our.
Right now, we're getting out the word and, you know, yay, let's go. We had, we now have composting.
But Deep River got money from the grant program. That's why, but we missed that. We missed that grant. Yeah.
Right.
Well, Abby will make sure this happens.
Entirely, but we have to come up with a way to use a grant.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Just apply for a grant, you know, Abby, Abby could probably speak to that. But, you know, you have to have where the money, what you're using the money for.
Right. If it's bags, if it's a residential carbon bin, probably, yeah, whatever. Yeah, we can, we can find, we can find ways to use it and spit it. If we know what the, the funding cycle is of the.
First thing is to make sure we get people doing it. So.
Yeah. And then we could, when, maybe we could, uh, apply for a grant to expand on it.
Yeah.
Exactly. Right.
Can I just bring up a, a, just a logistical point? If you're not composting in bags that are dissolving and you're carrying meat over there, it just, it's just, to me, even though I know you can put it in the freezer before you bring it, I just, are they really? You may have already said this and I missed it. Are you, are they prepared to accept meat in that situation there? Because of the animals and things like that. Like I just don't, everything I've read, I've read a lot recently on composting says do not compost meat. But I know that there's preparations in play to take the exited or whatever it is out of the liquid. And they have ways of handling it, but are we prepared, are they prepared at our town dump to handle meat? Because that ta, would take a special kind of, um.
Right. It does. I thought it was a totally different process.
Yeah.
You know, I thought it was a completely different process to, to compost, uh, meat products. You know, with more than just mixing it in with leaves. So.
I think we have to trust that Todd has done his research on this and he's got the right process.
And, and Abby, um, can tell us more, but I remember you told me, Abby, that that's the whole idea of mixing with the leaf compost is that there would be no liquids. There would be no, nothing leaching out of the.
There's enough to absorb. The, the ratio, it's, it's a very small amount of food scrap to leave compost ratio. So they're not, it's not like there's going to be a stream of, you know, material seeping out of this to a location that gets treated or aligned area. There's no need for that here.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So I think that's what we got. Uh, anything else MJ, or should we rock and roll on that?
No, I think, um, just if, please, if, if anybody has any input, if they want something, if they don't like how something's worded, you know, let me know. I'm not, you know, this is, and, and then I'll send it.
So the one that you sent us?
Nicholas.
The one that you sent us about the instructions that that one's okay to go?
Um, yes, I'm just waiting to, for the final word on what's okay to include and what's not.
You will have it tomorrow morning.
Okay, fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Uh, Japanese knotweed. Catherine and I have got to do our thing where we get the, uh, I've got to do it on Nextdoor. Catherine, you've got to do, uh, you gotta send the info to All Things Clinton or whatever, Pretty Clinton or.
When you guys do those postings, can you take a screenshot of it so that we can share it with the sustainability folks?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, do we have something new to post?
Uh, we've, I revamped the photos on that brochure, but frankly, it just needs to go back out. It's the same information.
Okay.
I forget where I was driving yesterday, but I saw a ton of it.
I'm sorry, MJ, what?
No, I was just saying, I, I forget where I was driving yesterday, but along the road, I just saw just a ton of it. I was like, oh, man.
Yeah, no, it's not good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was driving on Scotland Road in Madison and they were just cutting it down. I mean, I don't know what, you know, how they're supposed to, but they were just kind of mowing it down. And then I drove and I was driving down the road and I thought to myself, it's probably all over my tires and I probably just brought it home.
Yeah, it's no joke. So.
I don't know. I mean, it was going all over the place. They were just, they were just mowing it and it was flying everywhere.
Yeah, that's not good. They cannot do that. That is the worst thing you can do. So.
That's Madison. That's what they're doing. Anyway.
I'll send it to Mary Chitino. Maybe she can post it again on the town website for a little while.
Okay. I wasn't able to find an educational program. Do you guys do an educational program on it?
No, we were looking for one. Nikki Dacus, do you know her?
No.
She is really into, she applied for a grant that turned down, that was going to put on an educational program. Um, you know, and bring in like a couple of high powered speakers, the whole thing, and that got turned down.
Okay, because that was one of the requirements.
Yeah. Um, what we may want to try is something scaled back a little bit where, you know, we get a, you know, somebody from Yukon, um, and maybe somebody from deep to talk. Um, but we haven't done that yet. Okay. Um, anything else on knotweed or? No. Okay.
No, I'll just look back and I'll see, I'll just look back and, uh, because what is it? Did we post it last year?
Yeah, we did. Uh, I'll copy. The frame pictures, copyright.
Oh, I didn't hear any of that. Nicholas, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I, you were breaking up there. Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so I retook all the photos from the brochure because I was afraid of copyright issues.
Okay.
So, um, use the new one. I will send it to you to.
Okay. Okay.
So we've got amendments to bylaws. Is there, I thought we covered that off. I didn't know there.
We did that already.
Yeah.
Okay. So we can skip right over that excellent old business. Membership, student member. I don't think we have any here.
No, Tobias just didn't come this year.
You know, I, I think we're going to have to revoke his recommendation. That is college recommendations that we wrote for him. Okay. Um, hopefully we'll get one, uh, well, next year we'll get one. So we'll, we'll start looking. The public use of the infrared camera, this is the worst time in the year to do that. So we should skip over that because it really is meant for when it's winter time.
Yep, that's right. Well, I don't know. Could you use it for air conditioning? I don't think that would work for that.
I don't think it would work as well. I don't think the temper, temperature differential is as big. Um, so Brett and Sue, just so you're aware, the Conservation Commission bought an infrared camera that we, um, equated to the library and they rented out just in their library of things so that people can take photos of their house. And in the middle of the winter at night, and they can see where heat is escaping from their house. So we'll skip over that for right now.
And, and Nick, I saw from the May minutes that I said I would ask you about, like, how, do we have any idea how many people have taken it out?
I have no idea. I can ask.
It's probably easy to find out though, right?
Yeah. I don't think a ton because we haven't really done a huge amount of advertising on it.
Maybe once it gets cooler again, we can.
Yeah, we should pick that up. So we should leave this on our agenda, just skip over during the summer months.
To, to promote it a little more.
Yeah. Okay. So the, the next one's big. This is the open space, uh, along Killingworth Turnpike.
Yep. I have a good amount to report on that, Nick.
Okay, cool.
First off, what I'd like to do for next, uh, month's agenda is put this under workshops because it's going to be a work in progress going forward from now on. So if we could put that in our agenda under workshops. And let me report on what's been going on. First of all, at the last Clinton Land Conservation Trust meeting, I reported all the developments. Um, they are very interested in. I reported all the developments. They are very interested in pursuing a joint committee with us to explore the potential and possibility of going forward with a purchase of this property. So as you remember, the properties are 23 and a half acres, I believe, Mark. And it's a, and it was listed last, last time it was listed for 180,000. So it's within our reach, particularly, you know, if we can get grant money and get contributions from say the water company, which we got last time, seek some contributions from the town and, and then the land trust pays the difference. And I went through that with the land trust and they are in fact, very seriously interested in moving forward with this. So what we discussed and what they indicated they would like to do is to see us appoint a joint committee going forward to meet once a month and to determine the various things we have to do. And I can go through that right now, very shortly with the whole committee and, and just solicit everybody's opinion on whether this is good and they want to go through with it. First thing, I want to, I want to see if Mark, if you can contact that real estate agent again, have him speak with the, the person, the woman from New York who owns the property and see if she's still interested in selling. We need to know that right up front. And if she is still interested in selling at the indication of 23 and a half acres at 180,000, that, that's a confirmation we need by the time our subcommittee meets. So we know that going forward. If that happens, what we need to do then is one of the things you need to do is in order to go forward with a land, an open space purchase, because this is a long process, it could be anywhere from 12 months to 24 months or later, depending upon the grant timing. Then we need some kind of a letter of first right of refusal signed by her. Basically indicating she'll keep, give us the first right of refusal for a certain period of time so that we can do all the work necessary to go through with this open space purchase. So if you could find out, Mark, if she's still interested, let us know in the next couple of weeks. That would be great. The next thing we need to do is we need to check on what if any available grant funds, they're, oh, go on, Mark.
Mark, you have any microphone issues? We can't hear you.
Yeah, he, he was talking and we couldn't hear him and now you can't see him either. So.
I can see him from here. He's usually so good with technology.
Yeah. Can you hear us, Mark? Oh, okay.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess this thing's not working. No, I was going to say like Carla is the realtor and she did talk to the owner. And it was after talking to the owners when she said that we should write the owner a letter.
Okay.
The letter you wrote. So what I, if you want, like, if it makes sense, I'll talk to the realtor again, reconfirm, and then we'll probably end up sending the letter.
Okay, I got a letter from Larry. It's good to go. I'll have, he already put it on letterhead and we'll get it out.
I think a letter is going to really elicit a yes or no type sentiment from the owner. That's what the sense I got from the realtor.
Okay, now with regard to the letter, there was one addition that has to be put into that. And I'm referring to the letter that was sent out by Nick on 5/22/23 to all the members to review. There was one additional paragraph that goes in that letter. So we have to put that together. Mark, if you want to sit down for five minutes, we can go through it, put it together, and then we'll have to put it on the letterhead.
Okay, sounds good.
And also I'd have to get that to the president of the land trust so she can review and sign as well. All right, so.
So the river, do and prep her to send once we, once we're, you know, once we finish it, she'll be ready to send it.
Okay, so that we'll send the letter out and we'll get a response back from her. Okay.
When the letter is finalized, can we, can you send me a copy so I can make sure Carl stays looped in and, and that we're all, there's no surprises down the road.
Yeah.
So we'll send that to the planner. Okay, and, and to land trust president. And then to the owner. And what is the, does the real estate agent want to be involved? So we send it to him or to the owner?
Yeah, she can be involved.
The real estate agent?
Yep. Carla. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, so Mark, I will call you and let's go through the final things. Now, how do we get this on letterhead to get it out, Nick?
So once you get a final copy, send it to Sherri. She can print it out on letterhead.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, and then we'll, I'll give you a quick directive, Sherri, when we send it to you as to, as to, you know, sending it out to other people, to the planner, et cetera. And Sherri, is there a particular, do I have your direct number?
Phone number?
Yeah.
Or my email address?
A phone number.
It's the land. 669-6133. Bye. And they have to be.
Okay, so now, once we, once we send the letter out and Mark, you'll follow up to get that back from the real estate agent on the response on whether or not she's interested. If she's interested, I would say at that point, then we appoint a subcommittee of our members and then the land trust will appoint several people from them. I already had numerous people from the land trust who were interested in being on that subcommittee as well. And once we do that, we can go forward. The question that the land trust put to us, they wanted to know whether or not we'd be able to, in connection with moving forward as a joint subcommittee, we would have access to the expertise of our planner, Abby, with regard to kind of helping the subcommittee in its way. Because one of the first things we'll want to do is, we're wondering whether you can verify what would be available grants and any time limits that we have to comply with going forward.
Yep, I'll start, I'll start looking into it now. So we're prepared and then at least we'll know for this or if other things come up in the future, we'll, we'll have it.
Okay, so we, we wait, we'll get the letter together. We'll send you a copy, Abby. And then Mark will, you'll have that sent to the real estate agent to send to the owner or do, or is he going to give us her address to send directly?
She actually, the realtor said we could do it either way.
Okay.
She's happy to facilitate.
Okay, so when we prepare the letter, you'll need to be able to tell Sherri how to head it up, who to send it to.
Okay.
All right. And I'll, I'll be in touch with you, Mark. Okay. All right. So then what we do is send the letter out. Once she confirms she's in agreement, then we'll get the subcommittee together. I think the first thing the subcommittee is going to want is to get a letter from the seller indicating that we would have first right of refusal. So once we start committing to work and money investment, we'll have the ability to hold that property open for us for at least, I would say one to two years, because that's the process it takes to get it purchased. And if she's already been disillusioned by low balling by people interested in the property before, maybe she'd be willing to hold off for two years while we try to buy it. And then the other thing too is when we do want to buy it, we're going to have to have two evaluations of the property, fair market evaluation. So we got to hire people to give, give us those evaluations. Because if we're going to apply for a grant, we can't apply for a purchase price that's greater than fair market value. And the bill, and the owner's going to have to know that after we, we get her confirmation she's interested in selling. Because if it turns out fair market value is only 150 and she's asking 180, if we're going to get grant funding, we might have to talk about a 150 price. Maybe she could, you know, again, we'll have to have negotiations with her, but that's where we would be with regard to that. This is what the land trust was willing to consider and possibly propose, but all of this is fluid and it's going to have subcommittee meetings between our groups and report backs to the main group before we have any final decisions. But what they were suggesting is if the Conservation Commission would come up with the initial funding for the underlying tests and studies, i.e. an A1 survey, which, which by the way, the seller may already have. So we don't have to pay for another A1 survey, two fair market value evaluations. And, and then also an environmental study to basically identify all of the aspects and characteristics of the land which warrant preservation and therefore qualifies us for a loan. Not a loan, but for a grant from the state. Those three things. Yes, but I'm just saying tentatively, this is the discussion. If the Conservation Commission is willing to come up with those costs, which could be somewhere around $10,000 total, the land trust would then go the purchase amount less anything we can get from grant. And, you know, grants and contributions from other community people that we, we're going to try to solicit.
Okay, great. And.
Does that sound like something, a plan from everybody that they'd be willing to go forward with as a conservation commission?
Yeah, why don't we just take a sense of the commission right now and just sort of say, you know, is everybody on board with this plan to acquire?
Sounds great to me.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I was wondering, my question is what, why did she take it off the market? I, I.
Oh, because according, Mark, I think you told me, she was disenchanted by the fact that the only people who were making offers were people who wanted to buy the property for substantially less than the asking price. I'm assuming the reason they wanted to do that is the property has problems with development because there's so much rock ledge that there'd probably be a lot of blasting if you wanted to do some major development. And therefore the property doesn't have as much value because of all the rock ledges.
Right.
Isn't it because the access is from the power lines? Do you have to follow along the power lines to get to it?
Well, you know, we're going to have to find that out and get more information. I don't know how much the seller can provide us because, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the agent say that this is something she just inherited? And she's never seen the property?
She's never even been there, apparently.
And she lives in New York.
Yep.
All right.
So we'll have to find that out, maybe from the real estate agent. I don't know what, you know, but there's got to be some access. It can't be totally landlocked.
Right.
Well, the frontage exists and then so the, the frontage says the access permit would have to come from the state. And so that would be, you know, an encroachment permit from the state. The, the question is what is the wetland disturbance necessary and the wetland permitting necessary to get that access in? Because that, right, so, so closest to the power lines would be, I think, the easiest point of access to do that. And the question from the state would be, would they allow an encroachment permit directly adjacent to the access to the power lines? Would they consider that to be sort of a close enough cut that it wouldn't conflict because of the infrequency of use of the power lines? Or would they have another issue? So we'd want to talk to the district at some point to say, okay, what would you allow her? Especially if there's any talk of improvement or a way for the public to drive in and park if they're not going to access from other open space lands in other directions. We'd want to talk about that too.
Exactly. In other words, that's one of the things the land trust indicated that they can want to make sure that there's access in and also an area where we could put appropriate parking so that people can use the property. Because if the land trust buys it, they'd want to have their people go in, do trails, map the trails out and, and then have parking for people to access and use the property. So, so let me raise this, Abby, with you, given the fact that there's this issue right up front on whether we can get access and which would involve some parking area for people to park to get in. Is that something we should be checking on upfront?
I, I think that's part of the due diligence, absolutely. And I think that there should be a conversation with the state about where in the, the frontage they would allow or permit that access to go and also where both, with both the commission and the, the land trust would want that parking area to be, how many cars would you want it to park? You know, sort of what, what is the improvement you're hoping for? And do you already have a location thought of?
So all of this we can discuss at the beginning organizational meeting between the two groups. Okay? So until we get a, a go ahead from the owner that they're willing to sell and that they'd be willing to maybe, you know, to sign a right of first refusal for a certain period of time to hold it open for us while we pursue our due diligence and all our work. That's when we go forward. We'll appoint the subcommittees and then we'll have our first organizational meeting. Now, that being said, let's see.
Larry.
That's it. Go on.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good, mate. I guess this thing started working again. Should we put the right of first refusal lingo in the letter? If it's not already in there?
Well, firstly, we want to find out if she's interested in selling. And if she is, maybe what we could do is do a follow up phone conversation. But again, there's a lot of.
I think the letter, the letter is probably going to be what helps her make the decision of whether she wants to sell it.
Well.
You know, I'm guessing, by the way, but I'm just saying like, I have a feeling we're going to give her the letter. And that's how we're going to know whether she's interested in selling.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just afraid, I don't want to give too many projected conditions upfront until we know more about setting time parameters. You know what I'm saying? And after our subcommittees meet and get together, we can lay out all that and then determine, give her a more appropriate indication of everything that's needed. But certainly before we spend any money on any of these, you know, the A1 survey and, and also we'll find out if she has the A1 survey already. And then the, the evaluations of property, et cetera, before we spend any money on that and the environmental study, obviously we'd want to know from her whether she would sign first right of refusal. Okay.
Got it. All right. So we'll talk to the realtor. I'll talk to the realtor first and try to elicit kind of an interest or not as a final go. And then we'll send the letter to her once we get that.
Okay. And I'll get in touch with you within the week concerning finalizing on the letter that we'll get to Sherri.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So that's all I think, Nick, we, we have to discuss tonight. And can I tell the land trust that the Conservation Commission?
We've got to go from our side.
Yep. Okay. So there's a go from both sides. Okay, very good. And they, they meet the fourth Thursday of every month. So, or Tuesday of every month. So I'll see them next week, I believe. Okay. All right. Can I add one other thing to the agenda? I had a discussion with the P and Z member, Mike Rossi. I'm not sure, is he the chair of the P and Z or?
He is, yep.
Okay. And he pulled me aside at another committee meeting I was at. And he said to me that in connection with the 10% set aside where the Conservation Commission had previously communicated to P and Z that they should have some regulations concerning what kind, what's the selection criteria of the land trust in providing the 10% set aside. He said that the Conservation Commission needs to provide some type of proposed regulation for the planning and zoning to look at. So, and so what we need is we need to create a subcommittee and I'd be able, I'd be willing to work on it that would set out a regulation of what the selection criteria would be for whoever we give the 10% set aside to. And having, is there any way you would propose we go forward with that? Just a subcommittee and put up the regulation?
Yeah. So, so two things I would, I would do sort of a survey of other subdivision regulations in the region or best practices around the state. I think that's a good way to do it, at least because of one of the things that, that when, what will happen is the Planning and Zoning Commission will receive the proposal. And if it's coming in as just a point of discussion, they may refer it to the Regulations Committee to see if it's something that the Planning and Zoning Commission can just take up on it as its own to amend the subdivision regulations rather than having the Conservation Commission act as an applicant. I think it makes a little bit more sense for the the P and Z to take it on as a, you know, we, we crafted this jointly with the Conservation Commission and we are bringing it forward on our own. So, so what would be your most useful would be to start thinking about what is the management strategy, styles, you know, organizational status, that kind of stuff that you, that is having the most success in terms of land management? You know, does it have to have capacity for public, you know, components, certain insurance requirements, those kinds of things? A lot of the subdivision regulations, if they're on sort of an older track, which ours are, you know, they all have kind of standard language that was all going around the state at the same time. So you, we may run into similar language in a lot of different communities, but you know, we'll, we'll pull that. And I think you can sort of say, okay, you know, from a, and from a neutral perspective, what are the, what are the features? of a responsible land organization? What, what does that look like? And what are the highlights? It doesn't have to be long. It's, it's, I think it was section 5.8. It's, it's right now, it's like a bullet point in, in section five of this, I think it's five or eight of the subdivision regulations. And so, you know, it doesn't have to be long. It just has to be specific.
Okay.
What is this? Wait, is this regards to subdivision regulations?
It's with regard to, we had come up previously with regard to the 10% set aside. They were giving certain set asides to other trusts that really don't do anything with the land once it's created.
Oh, oh, you.
The question is.
Okay, yeah.
With the land, with the land trust suggested, and I'll get further input from them, but they were suggesting some kind of selection criteria that involves an organization that is a 401(c)(3), that it has monthly meetings to discuss stewardship of the property, that it has sufficient funding and insurance to ensure the stewardship of the property, and that there are commitments by the land trust to maintain the open space for public use or, or for, you know, preservation of flora and fauna. What we're particularly interested in is that these organizations will have a weigh-in process when the suggested 10% set aside comes up before P and Z. In other words, instead of simply having the person who proposes the development, just say, this is the, this is the 10% we want to give you, which is usually the least valuable property pushed off to the far end. We would like the the qualified land trust to be able to do a put in as to what they feel would be the best open space to preserve in that 10%, particularly if it's contiguous to other open space so that you start to extend the wildlife corridor and, and open space corridor.
Yeah, I think we put in something in Waterford when we redid our subdivision regulations there that had something about the, the open space has to be reflective in general composition of the, the parent parcel or the parent area. So there may be something in that language we can look back to. And then the other thing I would say is start thinking about if for some reason it's not something that the land trust wants to take and another suitable organization that meets the criteria isn't willing to accept the requirement for open space. What does that look like in terms of then deferring to cost, right? And sort of say your, the fee in lieu and, and some of that kind of stuff. So I think we need to just make sure that we're planning in the regulations for what happens if somebody's coming in with a subdivision regulation, there is no open space organization that's willing to take the land. Where does it go? How is it handled? And, and what does that mean for the, the applicant?
Okay, so I would be willing to prepare a draft regulation. And if anyone else on the committee wants to work with me, that's great.
Definitely work with you, Larry.
Yeah, when we did, hello, when we did the mapping for the town plan conservation development, right? We've already designated where, where land should be as far as creating a greenway. Is planning and, do planning and zoning have any, do they refer to that at all when they're reviewing applications?
So, yeah, the applications have to demonstrate consistency with the P O C D. So it's not whether or not they would require open space as, as, so if there were something contiguous, you know, it says, let's say there was contiguous on one part of the, the parcel being, you know, reviewed and not on the other side. They would have to make a finding that's just sort of, there is, this is consistent, let's move the open space this way. You know, they could certainly make that recommendation. It's something too, if it's referred to conservation, you know, they can bring in that as a condition or, or make folks modify. So all of those things are possible. We may want to look at some stronger regulatory language, however, to support the goals of the P O C D. Because the P O C D is the, is the guiding document. The regulations are the standard somebody's gotta meet. So I would say, you know, try to, if we can pull things out of that P O C D into the regulation, it will give it more teeth.
Okay, so the plan of action then would be, Nick, I'll contact you, we'll get together, we'll prepare a regulation and we'll send it to you, Abby, to take a look at with any further suggestions. And then if, if it looks good, then we'll look to you, Abby, as to how you would suggest we submit it, you know, as a joint project or however to, to ensure, you know, it, it's success as it goes through the process before it becomes a regulation.
Yeah, there's gonna be one step beyond that, which is after we submit it to Abby, get her feedback, I think we submit it to the committee as a whole. And just get that. Now, I will say, and I don't want to berate anybody, but when I, I feel like when I send stuff out looking for feedback, I very rarely get it back with anything.
Well, yes, I, I have had that experience too, for sure.
It'd be nice if we just sort of, as a team, we just say, acknowledge it, say, hey, it looks good, or, hey, here's my suggestions and, and get something back. That would be really helpful. Otherwise, you're sort of saying, you know, didn't even go.
I, I agree with you, Nick, and maybe we can address that in the regulation by basically putting it upon P and Z when they determine what the 10% is gonna be. And as you say, Abby, it's gotta be reflective of the entire parcel. In other words, a certain percentage of low land, certain percentage of high land and, and whatever other features, maybe we put language into that effect. So we would let the balancing be done by P and Z. And, and also to give priority wherever a particular area of the open space would extend an existing open space parcel or, or animal corridor to give that high priority as far as where you put the 10%.
Yeah.
Okay.
On that, Larry, we're absolutely right other town.
Okay, that's it. That's it. Thank you.
All right. So Sherri? Can we put that in as well onto workshops for next, next month as well?
Okay, what do you want? You should, if you, you and Larry are a little committee, what are you called?
How about the 10% set aside?
What about?
For P and Z.
I don't know what you. What was that again? You had two little people talking.
The 10% set aside regulation for P and Z. That's, that's the purpose of the subcommittee. So.
Well, you could just say set aside regulation committee.
Set aside. Opens, um, open space?
Yep.
A set aside committee. Open space set aside committee. Okay, and then right now the committee is just Larry and Nick. Is there anybody else that? Yes, okay, Larry. I'll do it. Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll make this a workshop for next month.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll be calling both members before then though, to set up a time to come up with, you know, preparing it. Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
No, I think that's great, Larry. You came with a lot of fire today.
All right.
So Sherri, I've been seeing a lot of, and I assume everybody's getting Sherri's notices of education opportunities and things like that, correct?
Yep.
Yep, I'm getting them. Yeah.
Okay, cool. Is there anything else that has come in that needs our attention, Sherri?
Let me just check. I sent out on June 6th from CAWS, there was the, the Connecticut in, in Luffy program, CAWS has now. And it says it's, there's a, they now have sufficient funds that are now available for restoration, creation and enhancement projects. But I don't think it's in our area. It's in the Houston River, the South Central Coast, Southeast Coast, Southwest Coast, and Thames River service areas. So I don't think Clinton Falls within that, but if you go online with them, you can read more about it. And this was from CAWS on June 6th. And there was an ordinary high watermark identification work, workshop on June 10th. I am sorry, June 2nd. And that's passed now, but you could have gone to a field workshop. I attended today, I did a Clear had one of their mini programs. It was an hour long. It's their summer. They usually do these during the summer. And it was on the dunes, beaches and dunes. And it's quite interesting. And it will be on the Clear website. I don't know when, but I figure in the near future. And they're also going to have a pamphlet that's going to be available. And I believe Clear is gonna have that information. It's in there, they're in the process of developing it now. And they used some of the photos in the seminar today.
Okay, cool.
And that's, that's all. Other than, you know, I stopped sending you agendas and stuff from other, other commissions, but if you sign up from the, through the town's website, you can get those if you're interested in them. It was just getting, I felt that maybe it was getting too much and there was, you were kind of missing some of the stuff that you really needed to see.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think that draws us to a close. Can I have a a motion to adjourn?
I move with adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Larry, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All abstaining? All right. I think we're good.
All right.
Thanks.
Night, everybody.
All right, cool.